Okay. Before we call this meeting to order, if anybody needs translation in Spanish, please see Yolanda Velez. Yolanda, can you raise your hand? I'd like to, before we start, I'd like to just thank all my colleagues here for nominating me and electing me. I'm new at this. I'm gonna make mistakes, so I'm gonna need help from all of you, you know. My number is always open for anybody to ever, you know, if you need to call me and talk about anything. Also, too, I'd like to thank Jeanette Velez. For the last three years, she's cheered up here. It's, to me, it's a thankless job. It's a lot of time consumed, and you don't get extra pay for it. So, Jeanette, thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, could I have the school committee minutes? Approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on December 6th? Can I have a motion to accept? Second motion. All in favor? Okay. Next, we have presentations. Camino's Expansion Team, expansion of the two-way bilingual Camino's program, and the superintendent search, and I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Burke.
Thank you, Chairman Memroski, and welcome to the chairmanship. I am going to ask Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent to come forward. One of our pride and joys in our district certainly is our Camino's program. We have tried many times to expand our dual-language opportunities in our district. I can remember when I was principal of Clark Avenue Middle School, we actually tried to expand it into the middle school way back when I was principal. And we were unsuccessful. At the same time, we think that we have, this past year, our expansion into fifth grade at the Kelly School, we think we have hit upon a model that is working. And so, we are extremely excited about the future for our dual-language program, beginning most certainly in the Camino's program, which is located at the ELC, and at the Kelly School. We are also, this is part of our five-year vision, to expand the multilingualism, to expand the opportunities for our students to learn many languages, not just two languages, but we want three, four, five down the road. I know that's a big vision, but that's what we want. And so, certainly with that, I would like to hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent, who has been leading a district-wide committee that is looking at the structure and the systems that we will be putting in place in this year, moving forward into fiscal '20 and beyond, for the expansion of this program.
Thank you. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce the team that's been working on this, if you guys want to. We have Lisa Line Weaver, the principal of the Kelly School, Jackie Bavir, the principal at the ELC, Julie Shay, the principal at the Brown. We also have Mike Talbot, who's the principal of the Clark, who couldn't make it tonight, and Sean Simpson, who's the ELL coordinator. So, just as, I'm just setting it up, but Mary just did a really nice job, so I'm gonna be quick. But we have been working together as a team in meetings several times to think about different ways that we can expand the program in a sustainable way. And what we've come up with is that we want to expand both up through, and make it K to 12, but also growing wider and increasing access. So, as Mary mentioned, in our five-year plan, there are two pieces that talk about dual-language literacy. The first is, as you know, the credential of biliteracy. Last year, we had 18 students at the high school earn the seal of biliteracy. And as well, we have the goal of expanding through grade eight, in which is what we've been working on, but we have a longer vision of expanding all the way through the high school. So, I think I'm preaching to the choir a bit here, but why we believe in dual-language education is, as we know, dual-language instruction is good for all kids and all types of learners. It builds on strengths of our kids and our community, and it's a real skill. It's a very, very marketable skill that we would like to have our kids leave our school system. It gets you jobs. It puts you forward. It puts you ahead of others. And finally, they do so well. Biliteracy is just a ticket to doing a very excellent job, both in education as well as in the workforce. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa, who's gonna talk about how and what are the details of our plan.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you from this side of the seats, the first time. As Sarah said, I think we're preaching a little bit to the choir about why dual-language programming is so important for kids, especially kids here in Chelsea. I want to give a special shout-out to the scholars at the Kelly School, because this is last year's information, but it's been a pretty consistent pattern, that our kids who are coming through Camino's are not just outperforming the others at the school and the district level, but are actually beating the state at third grade and fourth grade in ELA in math. That's not coincidence. That's actually not only showing the hard work that they've put in, but the fact that really learning in two languages is good for your brain. It's also something I want to highlight, that the growth percentiles that those kids are showing are exceptionally high. And so, it's not just, oh, maybe they came in higher. Well, they may have, since the early years of the program did have benchmark-level entry, but it also, that growth percentile's showing that they're adding value during the time in the Camino's program. So, just looking back, so we all have the same background knowledge. Camino's began here in Chelsea 22 years ago, 1996, and we've graduated about 1,100 scholars out of the Camino's program. That's a lot. And we've got 290 kids in the program right now, from the kindergartners at the ELC up through our fifth graders at the Kelly. The model is basically a 50-50 design, where kids are learning not just enrichment kind of things, but they're actually learning the grade-level content in both languages. For instance, my younger daughter, both of my own daughters have been in through the Camino's program. My younger daughter's a fourth grader. Right now, she's in two weeks in Spanish, where they're learning all their content in Spanish. After that, she'll be two weeks back in English. And so, they don't reteach anything. It's, we're literally moving straight on through at the same pace as all the other students at the grade level, but just half the time is in each language. It is a little bit unusual that we are currently a strand within a school model. Many dual-language programs are a whole-school model, and Camino's has always been a smaller strand within the school. That's been a little bit of a challenge. When we think about trying to meet the five-year plan goals of spreading this beyond, is it's a skinny little program, and so how do we grow something up when you only have two classes' worth of kids to try to make that leap into middle school? At the same time, is there's been a lot of demand for Camino's. So, the plan that we're about to share with you is gonna help to address both of those challenges. This is what it looks like right now at the Kelly School. The orange dots are our Camino's scholars. The yellow dots are all of the rest of our general education students. You can see that we're about 50-50 at most grade levels. Fifth grade is the only one that's all Camino's right now, because that was where we grew up, adding two classes that were Camino's only. That strand within a school model has kept it kind of small. And we actually, for a lot of years, have had the funny situation of having more kids on the waitlist wishing they could be in Camino's than we actually have in Camino's. We've got 290 kids kindergarten to fourth grade. We've got, at the Kelly School alone, about 340 students whose families are hoping and praying that there's an opening. And there's about another 59 kids waiting in kindergarten waitlist at the ELC. What that means is literally, if I could snap my fingers and we could fill every seat at the Kelly with Camino's starting tomorrow, we would still have about three classes' worth of kids at the Kelly School beyond what we can serve, and there's that many kids again at the ELC. So, it's a very, very popular program, very, very in-demand. The other part of the challenge of meeting that demand in an equitable way is recognizing that for the first 19 years, the program was, intrigue of the program was based on academic performance when a child was entering kindergarten. So, if a child was showing signs that they weren't showing early pre-literacy skills at the pre-K or kindergarten entry level, they may not have ever had access to the program, even if they may have been able to be successful in it. There were good reasons for that. There's also been good reasons for making it a more open lottery process now, and it means we've got a much more typical range of learners in our Camino's classes now. So, that's one step already towards solving this challenge. I'm gonna pass it off to Julie to talk a little bit about the building up.
As our group worked, we discussed the biliteracy pathways from kindergarten through 12th grade. In our conversations, we discussed the challenges of our existing program, including the gap at the middle school level. And for us, this seemed like an opportunity gap for our students to, one, continue with their biliterate education, but also for students who are coming in with five, six, seven years of education in a Spanish-speaking country and with many skills at a high academic level. This gap was due to the challenges of the transition from elementary to middle school, along with some prior attempts to keep the co-horted model that were not sustainable. This was one of the things that was described by Dr. Burke. With the advent of the LOOK Bill, which expands biliteracy education opportunities in Massachusetts, the time was right for us to really think about a clear, coherent, and also practical way to expand biliteracy education into the middle schools. So, we came up with an approach that would address both short-term and long-term ways to remedy this gap. First, we will grow the program at the Kelly through sixth grade in the next school year. Second, we will add Spanish as a world-language offering at the middle school level, beginning in the 2019-'20 school year. If the budget permits this approach, the middle school leadership teams will work to identify the best models for incorporating world languages. Some of the approaches that we have discussed is having a Spanish world-language offering as part of our unified arts. In this approach, all students in a school would have access to Spanish-language arts for part of the school year. A second approach would be to offer Spanish-language arts classes for students with prior education in Spanish language. This could be students who have previously participated in the Camino's program, as well as students who are coming from other countries, who have foundational literacy skills in Spanish. A third approach, and what might be the most practical approach, would be a hybrid model, which would combine both using Spanish-language arts as a unified arts offering, as well as a Spanish-language arts program for students who have foundational literacy skills. The third thing in our more long-term approach is to begin offering dual-language programming at the middle school level for seventh and eighth-grade students during the 2020-'21 school year and the 2021-'22 school years. In this model, we would have the option of having newly-arrived students who enter the United States with foundational Spanish-language art skills, joining their Camino's colleagues. And this would be a really positive way of increasing equity of opportunity for our students.
So, just to kind of put those pieces together of how do we solve the meeting demand in an equitable way? How do we build the pathway? Here's what we're proposing to kind of roll out over the next few years. Right now, this represents our sort of current reality. You see the ELC, two classes of Camino's, plus a whole bunch of other kindergarten classes. Then you see the Kelly School, one through five. We did add the fifth graders this year. Here's what it would look like going forward. The basic idea is that, starting next year, ELC would double the amount of Camino's classes, which, as those kids age up, would fill the Kelly School and make it a fully dual-language school over the next six years. Here's how it would look. This would be next year, adding the two kindergarten classes, two additional kindergarten Camino's classes at the ELC. That's not actually adding classes. That's converting two Gen Ed classes to Camino's classes. At the same time, the Kelly School is adding two sixth-grade classes. We can do that without needing to change other things, because we've got a particularly large cohort at third and fourth grade, that as they age up, it makes space. So, we can add those classes with no challenge. At the same time, our middle school colleagues would add those world-language offerings that Julie was just talking about, to start building the opportunities for Spanish language at the middle schools. The following year, 2021, the kids who've been at the Kelly School and are now in their seventh year of dual-language education would be heading off to middle school, and one of our middle schools would be ready to receive them with dual-language Camino's-style programming there. As that's happening, those kindergarten students are now aging up into first grade, then second grade at the Kelly, and then over time, Kelly becomes truly fully bilingual, sorry, fully dual-language, first all the way up to sixth, and then kids exit the Kelly and head off to middle school for seventh and eighth-grade Camino's programming there. The elegance of it is, we don't need to make a lot of changes in class numbers at the Kelly School or at the ELC. We're able to convert classes that already exist from Gen Ed into a Camino's, making that opportunity available to more kids without having to restructure buildings. In terms of straight-up numbers, I told you, we had 290 kids sitting in Camino's classes right now. We'd be able to get that up to 800 kids from kindergarten to eighth grade at any moment, once we get to that point in time. So, when you think about what that lets us do, we've got a chance to build a coherent pathway for kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade, where kids have access to the classes that are gonna truly help them, not just be bilingual, but biliterate, at the same time as we grow it wide and can get a whole lot more kids into that experience. So, belief of this team, belief of the work that we've put into it, is that this really will bring us in Spanish, El Camino al éxito, the pathway to success for so many more kids in Chelsea. So, thank you for your attention, and if you wish, we can field questions if you want.
Anybody have any questions? Ms. Velez?
Just wanted to say, both my boys were fortunate enough to be part of the Camino's program. It was only up to fourth grade, so when you said about the MCAS, my youngest received Abigail Adams, because he scored at band, so I'm gonna give it to the Kelly School for that. But I feel by doing this, we're gonna retain more of our kids that we lose to the charter schools. When I was a parent of the Camino's program, we were a tight-knit community there in the parents, and I know after that fourth grade, they started to panic, and that's when we lost a lot of our great students to the charter. So, I'm very happy to see this. I will support it, because I love the Camino's program. Thank you.
Leo?
I'm a former Camino's alumni. I went to the Kelly School, first grade to fourth grade. I had the, you know, the honor of being in Camino's, and my little brothers did as well. So, it's, seeing this is like the future for our students, you know, that way they could have access to dual languages and, you know, have better chances of, you know, how do I say this, getting a better job because of the fact that they speak more than one language.
Ms. Garcia?
As well, thank you so very much for all of the hard work each and every one of you put towards this. I don't remember if I was part of the Camino's. I probably was. I went to the Hooks. I don't know. But I remember my mom being an advocate for this. And so, thank you. Thank you so very much.
Is there any other questions?
You have to go. You have to go to the microphone, so that you're on camera. Sorry, Yolanda.
I just have something to add. As a parent liaison for the schools, I have to add to your comment, Jeanette, that I've encountered two parents, two families, that have held their students at Chelsea Public Schools because of the addition of fifth grade at the Kelly School.
Mr. Chad? And while we are not doing this primarily to keep our students from going into the charters, at the same time, it's an unintended consequence that that will happen, and I'm okay with it. But truly, this is the vision. This is where we need to go. And it's also, over time, we should be looking at, you know, expanding and starting another school on this type of a track, because 290 going to 800 is phenomenal, but at the same time, we have, in our elementary schools, about 2,500 students, and they can all benefit from multilingualism.
I just have one question. This, the Kelly School and the Camino's seem to outperform the other three schools. Is that true?
The students in the Camino's program have had very strong performance, yes.
So, this works? Thank you.
Research shows that to actually, to have a second language, your neurological, your cognitive piece is more flexible. We were talking about this earlier in my office, about in terms of being able to translate and move from one language to another. And the flexibility, the research has proven that it is linked to higher math scores and higher music ability, because music is a second language.
We do have a good music program here.
Ms. Velez?
Sometimes a lot of parents think this is just for Hispanic students, but do we have an actual number? Because I know we've had students that are not Hispanic that have done the Camino's program. Do you guys have like a number, some data, like how many? I've met a couple that were not Latino in the program, but I'm just wondering, because I think that's great, for everyone to see that even non-Hispanics are making progress.
I think that's actually a really important point. I'm glad you made it, that the program is good, like Mary just said, for all kinds of learners. When we are composing the original kind of kindergarten entry, one thing that I know over time has been trying to kind of keep a balance of those whose first language is English and those whose first language is Spanish, because what that allows is you've got students who can be language models in both languages. So, especially in the lower grades, we actually have parallel waitlists and can be able to kind of help to infill from kids. If we lose a Spanish, native Spanish-speaking student, that we make that first call to someone on that list. If we lose a native English speaker, we lose, we could make that first call, to try to keep that balance, so that students always have a language model for their own native language, but also language models for the language that they're learning.
May I say thank you so much for keeping this program alive, because I was one of the first advocates with Herman, with Socorro, back in 1993, 94, 95, when we were fighting for bilingual education. And I'm so proud that the Chelsea Schools was able to remain and have a program so strong that is growing now, that is proving that bilingual education is something that is needed, not only for the Kelly School, but I would say for all Chelsea, but all Massachusetts. I'm a strong, still a strong advocate for bilingual education. So, thank you for this great work. And I did, met some non-Hispanic children, Grace kids, most of us know Grace. They speak fluent Spanish. Every time that they go to the public events that we have in the city, I speak Spanish with one of her kids, and it's very, like, you know, like emotional, because she speaks Spanish that she learned through Camino's. It's proper Spanish, and it amazes me how beautiful the program is going to, you know, like it's growing. Thank you.
Mr. Bennington, actually, will, if you can hold your comment for public comment, rather than taking individuals from the audience. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the school board? Okay, I want to thank all of you coming up here. I know today was a long day, so thank you. I guess Dr. Burke is gonna make a presentation. We got in the search for the superintendent of schools.
I am actually going to make it from over here. Do I have, okay. We will go into public comment right after my presentation, so. So, you know, before the holiday, I did announce my intention to retire. And so, for the community, for all of you here present, for the school committee, for those of you who, especially, who are not at the Human Resources Subcommittee. And I'm gonna get choked up, I think. It has been the greatest honor of my life to be the superintendent of the Chelsea Schools. It's for the students that I work the long days. I am in my eighth year as superintendent, and prior to that, seven years as a deputy superintendent, and before that, principal, assistant principal, teacher, the whole thing. So, I have been 15 years here at City Hall. I intend to retire in December 2019. I have to say that my daily work, my daily work, my hourly work, even on the worst days, has filled my heart with joy. I'm not quite sure, many people in life can say that they've had a job that has brought them such joy, and it really has. My decision was not easy. I know that the work that we do is important, and the work that we do matters, and never underestimate that. It was, my decision was reached with a great deal of back and forth. And so, I have a contract with you through June 2020. However, I had always envisioned I would retire probably June 2019. And at the same time, my entire central office decided to retire on me. So, I was, oh, I can't do that, and I want to stay and finish the Clark Ave project. And so, eventually, I came to the conclusion that cutting it in half would probably be the best, December 2019. So... I think we're missing a slide, okay. So, what I am going to ask of you is to move yourself, school committee, beyond the individual and think as a collective whole. Think and do and work as a team this year. Your leadership this year is about fostering growth, building capacity for the work to be done, and the work to be done is the most important decision you are elected to do, that is, to hire a superintendent. It's to be done collaboratively with stakeholders, to create a succession plan for me that is in the best interests of Chelsea students, families, and staff. Your leadership in 2019 is going to require sacrifice of time and talent. It's gonna be extra time. As you unite as a team, you need to choose the next leader of the Chelsea Schools, who will build upon the work and the foundation, who will continue the five-year vision, and then build the next five-year vision, who will continue the Camino's plan and that vision that has been explained to you for the next three to four years. Your decisions, your work together, is going to take courage and vision and no egos. This is about the students first. It's going to take a team mentality, a team that puts our students first. So, I'm gonna retire December 2019. I'm at a point in my career, I have had many opportunities that have come by in the past couple of years, and I've said no, because it wasn't the right time for me to leave Chelsea. It's the right It's the right time now. I served a purpose. When BU was leaving, I served the purpose that BU transferred back to local all of the powers and responsibilities they gave back to the electorate, the power to elect a school committee. I represented a hometown girl who made her way up through the ranks, who had all of the credentials, master's degree, doctorate, who worked as an administrator. I worked as an assistant superintendent here and then a deputy superintendent. It was in the best interests of our district to put me in as the superintendent at that time. It is time now to think of the next superintendent and what is in the best interest. I'm hoping I also served as a role model for young girls and young girls in leadership. At my level in the state, I am in a very male-dominated profession when it comes to superintendencies. We're getting there, females. You're going to major in English. You could be a superintendent someday. But we need to keep that role model going forward. I also wanted to make sure that I provided the school committee with enough time to make this very important decision and enough time for me to be able to help the next person with that transfer, that continuity, that coherence, that transfer of institutional knowledge, historical knowledge. What you need to know about Chelsea is that we're kind of famous. We are on cutting edge and people know about us. We're highly, considered a highly successful urban school district. When City Manager Tom Ambrosino was hired and I told him my goal was to get us to level two or better, he said to me, just stay at level three. You're okay at level three. But we never went to level four, guys. Even though I was scared sometimes, we never went to level four. That is unbelievable for a district. And I actually think now, Tom, you are actually right. I should have probably just said, okay, level three or better. And then we would have been getting accolades all the time. I guess maybe I put it too high, but high standards are what we're all about in Chelsea. We are also known as high moral and ethical standards. We welcome and we educate. We turn nobody away. That is unbelievable as a school district, our reputation and what we're known for. We run an extremely well-run with strong policies and procedures, clear expectations for all. We are efficient. We still always have our improvement areas, but we are well-run. We have a strong and deep belief in collaboration and support of staff at each level. We're dedicated and extremely hardworking. Parents, teachers, administrators, strong leadership at every level of our organization. We are a leader. We started the five district partnership. We are a leader in early college. In the state, we have 30% of the entire population enrolled in early college. 30% from one little Chelsea High School. We don't even have second high school. Well, actually, we do. Sorry, Chelsea Opportunity Academy. But yet we have 30% of the entire enrollment in the state. We are a leader at the State House for changes in education. Our voice carries weight. We are famous. Succession planning. We are known for our deep and thoughtful succession planning so that we do not take steps back, but continue to move forward, sharing who we are and how we do things because we do things really well. Tom Kingston was superintendent. I was deputy superintendent. He announced one year ahead and the school committee moved me up. It was much easier when it was internal. But for a year, although I had been here seven years in the position, but for one full year, I got to watch, I got to learn from him. And so it was almost as if I was acting superintendent with him there to catch me and teach me. Paul Dakin, the former superintendent in Revere, retired, believe it or not, December 18th, two years ago. His birthday is in December. I will be retiring on my birthday next year, December 20th. December 18th, they hired the superintendent, Diane Kelly, as of July 1st. And he stayed on six months to coach, to mentor and to teach. She was an internal candidate as well. For us, we are going to be looking for an external candidate. It's just time and place and we don't have, we do not believe we have anyone internal that wants to take the position. So I am proposing that the succession plan means that we continue similar to what Tom did, similar to what Paul did, with continuity and coherence, that that continues. That I stay on from July 1st to December, that you hire the new superintendent effective July 1st. For us in Chelsea, succession planning is a value statement for all who work in our school system. We value past knowledge and we embrace the future. We don't let knowledge and institutional understanding, context, walk out the door. We make sure there's transference from one person to the other. Succession planning is an investment that benefits our students so that they don't have any rocky starts and stops. The decisions to be made by the school committee, you have to decide the transition model. You're going to have to decide who conducts the search. You can go out to bid, but it will delay the search by about eight weeks. The Call-In Center is my recommendation because it is a government agency. We do not have to go out to bid and we can contract with them tomorrow if we choose. And then you have to figure out what you're going to look for in the next superintendent. And then the timeline, what would that look like? So this is a slide in terms of the transition model. My recommendation, we do the Revere model. Conduct the search, January to May, hire the new superintendent effective July 1st, 2019. I stay on to train, coach and mentor and take on various projects. Who will conduct the search? My recommendation is the Call-In Center. The Call-In Center also is the group that gave us Tom Ambrosino, our city manager. They are the group that gave us Monica Lamboy, who took Jerry's place as Executive Director of Administration and Finance. We have used them in the city many times. I think I learned today that the Call-In Center also gave us Jay Ash at one point. Things that you need to think about looking for in the new superintendent? Character, commitment to social justice, access and equity for all. We welcome and educate. Diversity. It's time for diversity. It's more than time. Someone that gives their heart and soul for all of our students. Someone who is a listener and a collaborator. And someone who has a growth mindset. Growth mindset means you make mistakes, you're going to grow, you're going to learn from them. You keep learning all the time. So what does the search look like? Before you leave tonight, there is a scope of services. I did not want to presume that you would vote tonight for the Call-In Center, even though that is on the agenda. There is going to be a draft that we can pass out. Actually, Sarah and Priti, if you could help pass out. There is a scope of services for the Call-In Center. If you vote the Call-In Center tonight, I ask that you read this as your homework. You don't have it yet. As your homework for the retreat. And we'll go over, I will actually invite someone from the Call-In Center to come and go over it with the school committee on January 10th. In your packet, you have a very multi-colored, bright colored timeline of what they would propose in terms of the steps and the timeline for this search. And then there are two decisions you will be voting on tonight. Number one is to accept the recommendation. And I think it's the exact language, this is probably not the exact language that's in your agenda. But to accept my recommendation to proceed with the search and hiring of a superintendent effective July 1st, 2019. And then the second one is who is to do the search. And my recommendation is the Call-In Center. Questions?
Any questions? Ms. DePaddo?
So I see that we have the superintendent's draft, timeline draft. And I see on the flyer, it has a UMass Boston insignia. So did this come from UMass Boston or this come from you?
It's the Call-In Center and it's their draft of their timeline. And they're labeling it Superintendent Search because you're going to be looking for a superintendent. So the title is who you're looking for. So did it come from me? No, it's from them.
Thank you. Ms. Carlisle?
That we vote the Call-In Center in tonight so we can get the ball rolling in a faster motion?
I absolutely would. You're up against, in my level, superintendency, this is actually even a little late. It's usually October, November people start to get the advertisements. You're going to be up against more than likely the competition in our next door Everett would probably be looking for also a superintendent at some point. At the same time, this is the competition and you want, we want, Chelsea wants the highest caliber, the best candidates. And so certainly the Call-In Center, when they come, if you decide to have them, they can come to the retreat and they can talk about, you know, how do they recruit a pool? And so you will certainly read that also in the draft, scope of services. How do they recruit a high caliber pool? And they are going to engage the community. They will engage you in writing the profile of who you want.
So is it all right for me to make a motion tonight that we, how do we do it legally?
So I think at this point, if there are no more questions, I am going to step down. And I think we move into public comment. It is on the agenda, Ms. Carlisle. So you can certainly make a motion at that point when the chairman goes through the agenda items.
Okay, thank you.
We have any other questions?
We learned about this decision that you made that we respect and want to say thank you again. And thank you because I know that my children were at the public schools too and that the role model that you are for females is really amazing. And also at the State House, the role that you have taken in advocating every time that I'm knocking on those legislation door. So while your superintendent was here already, so.
I'll be still doing that.
I was going to say that. I hope I beat you this time. But we are very appreciative of your commitment to the Chelsea students, to the Chelsea community, to welcoming the una compañía children when nobody in other neighborhoods, city wanted them. And I'm going to start crying if I keep saying thank you, but thank you again.
Any other questions? Mr. DePaddo?
I've had the opportunity to work for nine or 10 superintendents. It was a pleasure. And we just got a draft handed to us asking us to vote on the Call-ins to do their work and select a superintendent candidates for us. But good conscience for myself, just for myself, I can't get a draft tonight telling me to support this. I can't do this. I need to do some research. So for myself, if there's a vote taken, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Ms. Garcia?
You have been a fierce advocate and such an amazing leader. And I thank you for everything that you do in our city. I trust your every intuition in this superintendent search. So thank you in advance.
If we have any other further questions, we'll move on to public comments.
I would like to speak in support of the transition plan.
You got to state your name and address.
I thought everyone knew. Sorry. Jackie Vavere, Principal of the Early Learning Center. Oh, and good evening and happy new year. I would like to speak in support of the transition plan proposed by Superintendent Burke this evening. I have worked in the Chelsea Public Schools for 29 years. And in that time, I have worked for several superintendents, some good and not so good. In my experience with the superintendent, when the superintendent did not have the pulse of the community and understanding of our school system and how it works, it impeded progress towards our goals and caused conflict amongst many stakeholders across the district. Remember, Chelsea is a unique community. As a veteran and senior administrator, I believe it's imperative that we ensure the new superintendent has the time and opportunity to deeply understand Chelsea Public Schools in an effort to make the transition as seamless as possible. There is no better way to ensure and support the new superintendent than to provide this person with the guidance, knowledge and experience that our current superintendent, Dr. Bork, can provide. Her transition plan is not only wise, it is necessary and prudent to ensure the continued improvement, success and future of Chelsea Public Schools.
Thank you.
Tom Ambrosino, City Manager. So first, I just want to say how much I enjoyed working with Superintendent Burke. I think we had a really collaborative partnership over the course of the last three and a half years. And you have big shoes to fill here. But all the more important that you attract good, qualified candidates that carry on the good work that's been done, not just in my tenure, but in Jay's tenure as well under Superintendent Burke. So I am here to support the two points that Mary made with respect to the transition. First of all, in my opinion, it's imperative that you get outside help to assist you in bringing forth good candidates. And my experience with the Call-In Center, both here in Chelsea and when I was Mayor in Revere, has been very good. My experience with them is that they do an extremely good job of delivering qualified candidates for a position. And that's really what you're hiring them for. You're going to, some committee is going to be put together to interview a candidate. And you're counting on this outside entity to cull through those applications and provide you with the best possible choices for interviews. Ultimately, it's your choice or the committee's choice for finalists and then presented to this committee for a final vote. But it's imperative that you're getting a firm that knows how to attract good candidates to the job. And the Call-In Center has a long history of doing that well. And I can tell you that from personal experience. So I think they would be a good choice for you. The second thing is, I absolutely agree with Superintendent Burke that given that she's retiring in December, it would not be wise to wait until then to bring on your superintendent. It really is imperative that there is a transition period where the new appointed superintendent has a little time working with the old superintendent to help the transition. Especially if the likelihood is that you're getting someone from outside the current school department. All the more reason why you're going to need this smooth transition to ensure that this qualified person, hoping you're going to get someone really qualified, is going to succeed. And I think that success is more likely if you allow for. And I think that success is more likely if you allow for this transition period. So even though it ends up costing a little bit more money, it's absolutely money well spent. As Superintendent Burke said, it was done in Revere recently, but it was also done in past superintendent selections in Revere when I was mayor. I would, I strongly believe it is the best way to ensure that this onboarding of the new person actually works out well. So the bottom line is, I strongly support the request for an outside entity to help you, and I certainly think the call-in center is well qualified to do that work. I think even more importantly, I urge you to utilize the opportunity to bring on your superintendent as of July 1st, so that he or she has six months to sort of learn the ropes with the previous superintendent by her or his side. Thank you.
Leo Robinson. Thank you to my colleagues on the school committee. I want you to hear it from me first. I put in an order to ask to meet with the school committee to talk about the process in hiring a new superintendent. I had the opportunity when I was at Pope John for 10 years on the board of directors to hire two presidents of the school. But coming back to Chelsea, most importantly, I was involved in the last two city manager search. We ended up with Tom, and before Tom, we had Jay. And I think it's very important that we take the time to look for candidates that understand the diversity of our community and help us move forward. I think it would be upon us to get together and talk about what the process is going to be and how it's going to be run. And actually, I had the opportunity in the two city manager searches to work with the call-in center, Steve McGoldrick, and they represented us very well. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Matt Bennington. I am currently a teacher at the Clark Avenue Middle School. I know several of you in different capacities. I am also a member of the executive board for the Chelsea Teachers Union. I'd like to start by acknowledging Dr. Burke's service in our city. I can think of no higher calling than to live a life of service, and you have embodied that for many, many years. So thank you very much. I'm also excited to hear about the thoughtfulness that is going into the superintendent transition plan. And as Dr. Burke mentioned, listening is a very important capacity in whomever replaces her, and I hope that this person will be able to demonstrate listening skills with the teachers that she or he leads and the union that she or he will work with. I'm also really excited to hear about the bilingual program that has been talked about this evening, and I think that it is a real mark of the strength and progressiveness that our schools can embody. And I have some questions that I hope get answered going forward, and I hope they're not taking as criticisms, but some of our concerns are for our current staff. Now, part of the presentation said that there would not be much change in terms of the numbers, but there's a capacity needed to run this bilingual program. So will that capacity, will training in that capacity be offered to our current teachers now? Will we be looking to add additional staff? What kind of transition plan will we need for the faculty to support this program in the current years, coming years? In addition, I'm excited to hear that there will be a lottery system to make this a more reflective student population, but a more reflective student population of the general populace means more special education students. And so in what ways are we supporting special education students in a bilingual program? Because we're talking about certifications upon certifications. And so for transitioning, do we train our current people early? Do we look outside? These are curiosities, but I think there's really important details to be considered if we really want our school to be the best at doing this, which I know we can. Thank you.
Could we also have a list of those questions? Thank you.
Good evening. Lisa Line Weaver, Chelsea resident, live at 18 Franklin Street. You heard from me earlier with my Kelly School Principal hat. I'm also now wearing my resident hat, my voter hat, my parent of two Chelsea kids hats, and my former school committee hat. But I'm also wearing the hat of someone who I worked with and in Boston Public Schools from 2001 to 2017, and whether, trying to count back, I think I counted through four superintendent transitions. And in the school where I worked before I came to Chelsea, we had four different principals, three different principals in four years. So that's a lot of transition, and part of the thing that I think is so important from all those places where I sit is to think about not only recruiting somebody great, to replace somebody great, but also to think about making sure that when we have a transition, we make it one that sticks. Because one thing I've learned from all those transitions is how much consistency is underrated. Every time we have a transition, we have uncertainty. Every time we have uncertainty, it means that the people who are responsible for doing great work for kids every day have distractions and competing commitments and other things to think about other than how do we do our best work for kids. And so I know when I sat where you sit on school committee, it was my honor to approve and endorse a contract that's taken Dr. Burke through the time to retire in Chelsea, which you said was your goal, and I'm so glad and sad at the same time that you're doing it. But I think the opportunity to really think about how do we set up the next superintendent to be as successful as possible so we don't have to do this again in two years or three years? Because our kids do not have time for us to take a step back and figure out how to get it right. And I think the best way that we can make sure that we choose somebody not only who's highly qualified, like all the other superintendents in Boston were, but somebody who's going to stick is to make sure that we set them up for success. And one of the biggest ingredients in somebody's success is making sure that they've got a skilled team around them and the trust of a team around them. And so the transition plan that gives a chance for someone new to come on and to learn with and from, not only Dr. Burke, but also the rest of the team here, I think is a really critical ingredient. If you're thinking, well, we're hiring somebody qualified, can't they just come on in and do it? To that, I would say, it's a really complicated job. I know where I sit, my job is complicated, and a superintendent's job is way more so. And so I think it's not about somebody being qualified, it's about even a qualified person needs time to do the learning here so that the work that they're doing is picking up and moving forward, not circling around and taking us back. And if you're thinking, but budgets are tight, shouldn't we be putting them to schools? The answer is, this is putting them to schools. Because an investment in the success of our next leader is going to make the jobs easier of everybody at every level, from superintendent to central office to school leader, down to classroom teachers. So think of it not as money spent, but as money invested in the success of our new leader and of our team. So obviously, I endorse both of these proposals. I hope that you can think about that as you make a decision in how to move forward, because this is going to be a really important next five years here in Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else for public speaking? Public speaking is closed. Okay, next we have the report of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am going to call Assistant Superintendent Sarah Kent forward for the monthly indicators of success.
Good evening again. Tonight, the indicators of success will be pretty short and sweet in that we only have our monthly indicators to talk about, in that the quarter is ending in about two weeks, and that's when we'll have more of our achievement data. So the monthly, we're only going to be looking at indicators two and eight, as well as our mobility. So if you could start on page three with our attendance, indicator two. You'll note that we met, we are meeting or exceeding our target in grades one through seven of attendance rate of 95%. We're very close in grade eight K and pre-K, and we're still working on improving our attendance at CHS, but we are making progress. Overall, we are 1.7% below our target, but we're hoping that will improve soon. If you could turn to page six. Indicator eight is around our dropout rate. We currently have 40 students who have dropped out, which is 10 students this month, four less than last year. But if you look at the table at the bottom of the page, you'll see that most of, more than half of the students that have dropped out this year are ELL students, and especially when you include those with disabilities as well. If you look at page seven, you get a little bit more detail about who those students were. The 10 students that have left, seven of them, we do not know what their plans were. Two have gone to an adult education program, and this month, grade 10 saw the largest dropout rate with seven students. If you could turn to page nine to look at mobility. So the month of December did not see that much mobility. We have lost a few students at the ELC and the high school, and we've net gained a few students at the elementary and middle. But overall, so far this year, we've had 845 kids come or go, which, as you can see in the footnote, is a 13.8% as of now mobility rate. Overall, we've gained 63 kids, having lost 391 and gained 454. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to field them.
Any questions?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Mr. Chairman, I am commending to the report, enclosure B, the personnel update. There, in the month of December, we had nine new hires, six resignations, retirements, terminations. We had five promotions, transfers, and one leave of absence. I will also point out that our, for our district personnel report at, across the district, all positions, we have broken down into 34% Caucasian and 66% Hispanic. So we continue to push the diversity piece. I am also commending to the record enclosure C, which is our enrollment report. We have 6,081 students in district, 182 students out of district, for a total enrollment of Moving on, in terms of my announcements, I want to say that today I was bursting with pride at the governor's inauguration. Our Chelsea High School cantare was invited to perform. I sent out a couple of pictures, but once I get home tonight, I will get around to tweeting out all the other pictures. We have also sent some pictures to the Chelsea Record for publication, but our students are something to be proud of. And again, my heart was just bursting for joy. And the governor, literally, the students were in the middle, similar to here, performing, and after they were done, everybody was, you know, clapping, and he literally came off his chair and was like, woo, all the way. Of course, he's a lot taller, so he could actually reach over. So it was, it was definitely an experience and a memory. So I would also, I'm bursting with pride to announce that Alicia Smith has been accepted to Framingham State, and she's going to study English. January 8th, Project Equity at Malden High School. So Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, we are all joining together to make sure that we're continuing to advocate. We will be presenting the discrepancies on the budget between what we should be getting and what we're not getting from the state. This is, we do believe that this is something that we would like all of you to attend. I think it's educational. I think it also shows the importance of continuing to push the budget issue at the State House level. The, you know, we've been told, and even in the governor's remarks today, he said, his remarks did actually state that the foundation budget, I mean, the foundation formula is broken and it needs to be fixed. Those were the exact words. Of course, what that fix looks like, I'm a little bit wary, so we need to keep the pressure on. Boston Media will be at our presentation, which will be at Malden High School, 6 o'clock next Tuesday evening. Also, next Thursday evening, we have our school committee retreat from 5 to 8 o'clock at the Clark Avenue Conference Room. And Terry and Veronica have gotten Rita's catering for dinner for us, so that's nice. And then January 21st is Martin Luther King Day. There is a celebration at Chelsea High School that will begin at 9:00 a.m. And of course, our next school committee meeting is scheduled for February 7th. You also have in your packet tonight a report, an organizational study of public administration. This is actually, was done by the call-in center. It began a while ago. We didn't get the final copy until the end of November. It was actually started in the spring of 2017. So some of the items in here, you'll already note, we've actually been working on and we've reorganized and we've fixed. But one of the things I'd like you to do is, I would like you to read this in preparation for our retreat next Thursday, in particular, the section on the Human Resources Department, because we are looking to reorganize our Human Resources Department, especially now that we are looking, we'll be looking for a new director, et cetera. And the retreat, certainly the agenda for the retreat, I will be reaching out and meeting with the new chair to plan that agenda. So that's our first task.
I'm looking forward to it.
With that, I conclude my report. Mr. Chair, and I hand it back to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive our subcommittee reports, except for the students, except for our student reps' report.
Have a second?
I will say, last year, 2018, we had students from Southern Africa come to our school, and I want to say that it was a really great experience. I had, actually, I had, in two of my classes, I had a bunch of them with me, and I saw that they were really taking part in the class, they were involved, they were participating. And I don't know if you know, but now we're making announcements in the school in both English and Spanish. And actually, one of the girls that came from South Africa, she said, almost in tears, that she was really happy that both languages were taken into account, because back in her country, she's saying that there's like a language barrier. So she was really happy to see that us Chelsea here, we really do take into account both English and Spanish.
Dr. Burke, you took most of my ideas, what I was going to say, so I had to fix it. Basically, the cantare did perform today for the inauguration of Governor Baker. The drama club has the opportunity to do kind of like a drama contest at Emerson College on January 26th. So for their fall play, they did the importance of being earnest, so there will be a smaller group of students to make a 30-minute rendition of it. All the sports are off to a good start. A junior, Stephanie Simon, she ended up getting the most outstanding field athlete at a Holiday Classic for indoor track. We, I personally also wanted to memory Janice Cravata, she worked at the Berkowitz Cafeteria Worker for 12 years. She did pass of ALS on Monday, and she was like, basically like the drama club, we called her like Drama Mama, and she had a really good connection with all the students she talked to.
Okay, move on to unfinished business, and it looks like we have none. On to the new business. Ms. Enrique has moved to accept $11,460 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Teen Pregnancy Prevention Grant. Explanation, the federal-funded Teen Pregnancy Prevention Partners for Youth Success Grant, also referred to as PREP, is intended to support districts in implementing evidence-based teen pregnancy prevention programs in middle schools. The priority of this grant is to support the continued work of districts participating in the PREP grant with implementation of and subsensibility planning for the program. Districts receiving these funds will ensure that. The curriculum has been approved by implementation during the 2018-2019 school year. Work groups formed within the district during the initial grant are maintained. All project personnel, including teachers, attend all designated required trainings sponsored by the sponsored by the Department of Elementary, Secondary Education, and all the Department of Public Health. All evaluation activities are completed in full. The grant funds will be used for stipends, contractual services, conferences, and to purchase supplies, materials, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General's laws, chapter seventy-one, section three thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Enrique moves to accept, no, we gotta, I'm sorry. Can we take a roll call?
To accept eleven thousand four hundred and sixty dollars from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Teen Pregnancy Prevention Grant. Ms. Hernandez? Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Ms. Enrique moves to accept thirty-five thousand from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Systems for the Student Success Initiative Grant. Explanation: The Systems for School, the System for Student Success Initiated is designed to support districts that want to thoughtfully examine and sympa- sympathetically address their students' most significant, most significant barriers to learning. The SFSS initiative provides participating districts with grant funding, targeted assisting and networking opportunities to identify and prioritize these barriers, and then plan and implement systems and strategies to address them. Plans are developed through the lens of five interrelated domains: school climate, engaging instruction in academic and social, emotional learning; proactive student support; systematic family engagement; and strategic partnerships. In addition, districts go through a process of assessing and redesigning the systems and infrastructure needed to support this work with coherence; policy changes, role shifts, and resource needs; team instructions. The grant funds will be used for stipends for social, emotional learning; lead teachers and team meetings to purchase supplies, materials, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. You have a roll call?
On the motion to accept thirty-five thousand dollars from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Systems for Student Success Initiative Grant, Ms. Hernandez? Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Ms. Enrique moves to accept eight thousand from the University of Oregon for the Fusion Math Intervention Program for school year two thousand eighteen through two thousand nineteen. Explanation: Between November seven, two thousand seventeen and May two thousand eighteen, the Hooks, Berkowitz, and Kelly Schools participated in an improved research study conducted by the University of Oregon to pilot the Fusion Intervention Program. The purpose of the project was to examine the efficiency in, efficiency and efficiency of fusion. A sixty lesson, first-grade math intervention designed to help students build foundational number sense skills. For participating in the project, each school will receive one thousand as an initiative for participating, and additional five hundred for participating in classrooms. Hooks, three thousand. One thousand incentive plus two thousand for four classrooms. Berkowitz, twenty-five hundred. One thousand incentive plus one thousand five hundred, three classrooms. Kelly, twenty-five hundred. One thousand incentive plus one thousand five hundred, three classrooms. The grant funds will be used to purchase supplies, materials, including instructional technology, furnishings, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts Laws, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for additional, for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept eight thousand dollars from the University of Oregon for the Fusion Math Intervention Program for school year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Ms. Enrique moves to accept a sum of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight in additional funding for the Title I, Title Two A, and IDEA Federal Grants for, for year two thousand eighteen. Explanation: Chelsea Public Schools are eligible for certain federal grants available to provide support and supplemental services for certain school populations. These grants are distributed to the states, and then by the states to eligible districts. An explanation of each grant is contained in the budget book. DESI has issued final allocations that incorporate all required adjustments to initial allocations. For grant awards issued for two thousand eighteen are shown below. Although the grants are labeled as FY two thousand eighteen, DESI allows the funding to be used across two fiscal years. As a result, the additional funds identified below can be used to cover costs occurred this year. Funding is provided for the cost of supplementary staff, professional development, and grant-specific school activities, supplies, materials, and technology. Massachusetts General Laws, chapter thirty, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept a sum of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight in additional funding for the Title I, Title II, and IDEA Federal Grants for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Each, yeah, each school year, the, the school committee, okay, I lost my. Sorry about that. Ms. Enrique moves to amend the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen non-bargaining salary and wage schedules two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, to add a new position of financial analyst and amend the classification for senior accountant for payroll. Explanation: Each year, the school committee approves a non-bargaining salary and wage schedule for employees who pay is not subject to the bargaining agreement. The classification structure in place is a result of the study performed by the Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management at UMass Boston in two thousand sixteen. The first action proposed for consideration is to move the existing position of senior accountant for payroll from classification F to classification E. It was recently discovered, in the original Collins Center assessment, the intent was to place the position in classification E, but the position was inadvertently placed in a wrong classification. The second action is to create a new position of financial analyst to be placed in classification G. This new title will offer the business office an opportunity to focus more on analyzing the district's budget versus expenditures and key cost drivers. While also continuing to process the high volume of daily transitions, the duties and authorities, authorities of this new position are consistent with the classification structure created by the Collins Center. Consideration and act, I'm sorry, roll call?
On the motion to amend the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen non-bargaining salary and wage schedules to add a new position of financial analyst and amend the classification for senior accountant for payroll, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Consideration and action to accept one thousand twenty-five, one hundred and twenty-five thousand from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Turnaround Assistant Grant, formerly known as DSAC. Explanation: The purpose of this non-competitive grant program is to provide funding to Massachusetts lowest-performing schools and districts to support development and implementation of turnaround plans that, one, are aligned to the four overachieving Massachusetts turnaround practices; two, incorporated evidence-based strategies, and utilize a continuous cycle of improvement to implement and access the outcomes of turnaround plans over time. Funding for Chelsea is less than anticipated in the budget because a higher achievement at the Sokolowski Elementary School made the school ineligible for funding. The Chelsea High School is not included because it is not receiving a Level Three turnaround grant. Funding for program monitoring is being provided directly to service providers by DESA this year instead of through districts as it was in the past. And DESI has a new funding allocation this year to provide funds to prove, to, funds to move, sorry, funds to more schools across the state and to schools with the very lowest percentiles. The grant funds will be used for stipends, contractual services, conferences, indirect costs, and to purchase supplies, materials, and other expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Turnaround Assistance Grant, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Okay, consideration and action to accept five thousand from the One Eight Foundation for the Five District Partnership. Explanation: Funds from the One Eight Foundation will support the Five DP Educator Showcase. The One Eight Foundation is a private foundation based in Boston with the mission of accelerating and bolstering the success of other nonprofits addressing some of the most challenging problems in the United States. The grant funds will be used for expenses associated with the Five DP Educator Showcase, including congressional services, maintenance and technical support, and other expenses in the support of the program. Massachusetts General Laws, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants of the, of the educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
On the motion to accept five thousand dollars from the One Eight Foundation for the Five District Partnership, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Consideration and action to accept an increase of nine thousand one hundred and ninety-eight in the social worker to reduce so, school violence state earmark for a total award of eighty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-eight for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Explanation: In September, the school committee accepted seventy-five thousand earmark from the state legislature to reduce violence in Chelsea schools. Since the date, the state has added the unexpended balance from last year's award to this year's reward in the amount of nine thousand one hundred and ninety-eight. Last year's award was received on March twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, and while every effort was made to expand the funds by June thirtieth, a total of nine thousand one hundred and ninety-eight remained unexpended. The recent additions bring the school year two thousand nineteen award to the total of eighty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-eight. The funding will be used for salary, supplies, and other items in support of efforts to reduce school violence. Massachusetts General's laws, chapter seventy-one, section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. We have a roll call?
On the motion to accept an increase of nine thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars in the social worker to reduce school violence state earmark for a total award of eighty-four thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, Ms. Hernandez? Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a field trip to Dartmouth College in Hanover, New Hampshire for two students and one coach on Saturday, January twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Explanation: A Chelsea High School student athlete has the opportunity to compete in two of the state meets during the, during this winter season. At this meet, the student will be competing in both the triple and the long jump at Dartmouth Relays. All of state field trips must be approved by the school committee. Consideration? All in favor? On to the next one. Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a field trip to the New Balance Indoor Nationals at the Amri in New York City, New York, for one student, one coach, and one family member on March eighth, two thousand nineteen, through March tenth, two thousand nineteen. Explanation: A Chelsea High School student athlete has the opportunity to compete in two of state meets during this winter season. At this meet, the student will be competing in the long jump, triple jump, indoor high jump. All of field trips must be approved by the school committee. All in favor? Any objections? Ms. Hernandez recommends the appointment of Ms. Linda Bro as Deputy Superintendent, Human Resource Director.
Um, just for explanation, and we did, um, go over this at the HR Subcommittee a week ago, a week and a half ago, um, that, um, we are trying, as our assistant superintendents, their contracts expire, we're trying to correct the error of the past, and we are doing, um, not only an appointment, so it's two motions, an appointment, and then the second one is to accept the, um, the, the extension of the contract. There is an amendment, um, it's a one-pager, um, Cheryl Watson was able to give it to us. I, we were, did not have it from Cheryl in time for the HR Subcommittee. However, um, she did give it to us this afternoon, and so it basically states what was agreed to at the HR Subcommittee, that Mrs. Bro's contract will be extended by three months at her current salary. And that will move her into retirement.
A roll call vote, because it's connected to money. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote on that?
On the motion to appoint Mrs. Linda Bro as Deputy Superintendent, Human Resources Director, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Ms. Hernandez recommends to accept the amendment to the employment contract for Deputy Superintendent Linda Bro, which is three-month extension for, of her current contract at her current salary. Yeah, we need to take a roll call.
On the motion to accept the amendment to the employment contract for Deputy Superintendent Linda Bro, which is a three-month extension of her current contract at her current salary, Ms. Hernandez? Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Ms. Hernandez recommends to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to contract, to contract with a temporary nursing agency to meet the medical needs of a Chelsea school student. Roll call vote?
Oh, yeah, it's connected to the money, right? Yeah, go ahead. On the motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to contract with a temporary nursing agency to meet the medical needs of a Chelsea school student, Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez? Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Ms. Enrique's moves to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to proceed with the superintendent search with intended hire date of July 1, 2019. Roll call?
On the motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to proceed with the superintendent search with an intended hire date of July 1, 2019. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, the motion carries.
Ms. Enrique's moves to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to contract with the Collins Center to lead the search for the next Chelsea School Superintendent. Roll call?
On the motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to contract with the Collins Center to lead the search for the next Chelsea School Superintendent. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Maransky?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Ms. Enriquez?
Yes.
Mr. De Pato?
No.
That's eight in the affirmative and one no, the motion carries.
We have a motion to accept all the communications? Second, okay. Next is the announcements. Anybody have any? Ms. Carlisle?
A couple weeks ago, I attended the concert at the Chelsea High School. And I want to say how proud I was of the students at the high school. They were awesome, the dances were wonderful, the band was great, the chorus, everything, that went well. And you guys are very lucky to have the staff in that music department to run the program the way they do. And I'm very proud of them. I put it on Facebook so everybody could see how talented these students are. And I want to congratulate all of them.
Any other?
I just would like to say Happy New Years to everybody and to thank my colleagues for supporting me for three years as you're having the faith in me to be your chair. It was a great experience, a lot of learning. I know it has helped me professionally and personally being in that role. So, I want to thank you guys. Just because I'm not in the chair doesn't mean that I'm not here to support any of my colleagues. Absolutely, I will continue my work, my passion for our students. And I'm still here, so nothing changes really, besides me sitting there and you doing all the reading. But again, I just wanted to thank everybody and Happy New Years. And let's make this a great, successful year for our students. Thank you.
Mr. De Pato?
I just want to take this time to thank Linda Bro for her commitment to the students of Chelsea and to Chelsea Public Schools. Thank you for your service.
I'll thank you when you retire. I have an announcement. I wanted to thank Dr. Burke for helping me to get through tonight and be patient with me.
Richie, Rich?
We have, Mr. De Pato?
Yeah, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the patriarch of the Richards family, well-known family in Chelsea, who passed away this week. Five, four wonderful kids, all graduates of Chelsea High School. I'm very, very proud of that family.
Okay, do we have any more announcements? Message, Emmanuel?
So, this is the first time that I learned that Dr. Burke is retiring. I just really want to say, I got to know you like five months ago. And I really want to say that you have been a great person. You have impacted my life in a scale which I didn't expect when I first met you. But I really want to say thank you for everything you've done for us as well and for all the work you're putting into our school system.
Thank you, that means the most.
Do we have anybody else? If not, meetings adjourned.